Welcome, everyone, to this Weaver County
Recording in progress.
... meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 10th. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bolus. I'm joined by Commissioner Jim Harvey and Commissioner Gage Faur. Wave, Jim. There we go. We'll ask the audience to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which our invocational moment of silence will be offered by Ms. Stephanie Russell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Dearest creators, we are so grateful for this opportunity today to meet as county government, staff, and our general public that we might be able to have a wonderful meeting that is focused on solving some of the issues in the county and providing a realistic means of creating community and quality of life for the residents and those that visit here in Weaver County. We are very grateful for all that we are given, from our talents and from our opportunities, for the camaraderie that we share with one another, and for the excellent leadership that's shown by the many elected officials and the staff that will work here in the county. We ask today that this meeting be blessed with a sense of peace and a sense of collaboration, and we pray for these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Item D is Commissioner comments. Commissioners, anything to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out. I think we all attended the Meadowbrook Open House last night for the 46 units that Weaver County actually, through their ARPA funding, was able to purchase that property. A major improvement, I believe, for Ogden City, and a major improvement for those citizens that are looking for housing. I was totally taken back by the quality, really what that building will mean to people that 30%, 40%, 55% AMI, that puts them in a facility that, really, they can call home. I talked about that last night, and I think it's just a great thing. And I wanted to give a shout out to, obviously, Scott Park, Chris Crockett, our staff at Weaver County had a big hand in making that reality. But I'm proud that we had a part in providing housing, critical housing, for citizens in this county and city.
Yeah, it is a beautiful facility.
And, obviously, Weaver Housing Authority, Andy Beedles and that group deserve a lot of thanks. Anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, it's beautiful.
I would only hope, just, I wanted to bring that up, too. I would only hope and echo that when people say, "Well, government doesn't do enough," then there wasn't enough of those people who make those comments there last night, because that was a, just the fit finish for what they got, and smart how it was done, and the layouts. It just, I was just, they have a great, safe place to better their lives. And, you know, for that group, and just, I, it was, it made me proud to be a resident of this county, to know, be a part of, and certainly want to thank those, all those who made a part of that happen, because it's the, that's the right thing for government to use those types of funds for to do. So it was great.
It really was. And if you look at the, what that property had on prior to this, I don't think anybody can't say that's a major improvement from, yeah. So I think we know what was there before. I would hope Ogden City would have similar thoughts, that this was actually a good thing for them. I'm hoping.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you both. I agree. It was, it was wonderful. Okay, item E is agenda-related public comments. Comments will be taken from the audience for any items that are listed on the agenda. If there's anyone who'd like to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward at this time? Any online? Okay, we'll move to item F, a presentation. YCC update on domestic violence services. Ms. Danette Stanger, Executive Director, welcome.
Thank you so much. Are you guys comfortable if I join Zoom and share my screen?
However it's convenient for you.
I'm happy to do that if you're comfortable with that. Just a moment. Okay, so it shows that I'm sharing screen now, if you guys can see it or not. But I have some handouts, too, I'd like to share with you.
Thank you.
I just want to begin by thanking you guys for allowing me to come and speak to the county commission today. YCC is entering its 80th year of being embedded here in Weaver County, and we have always known and seen Weaver County as one of our strongest partners and are grateful for the opportunity to serve the members of this community. I know that you guys are probably aware, but I'm just going to do a really brief history of what YCC is and the services that we provide. YCC supports individuals and families impacted by domestic violence and sexual violence through safety advocacy and resources on their journey to safe and healthy lives. Our thing that we're probably most well-known for is our shelter, but I always want people to know that we do so much more than that. We are available for community case management, and actually, we have more people go through our community case management services than through our shelter every year. We want people to know that you don't have to wait until it gets to a severe level that you have to flee your home to get help from YCC. We do a lot of criminal justice advocacy, protective orders, but we really focus on healing. So we have psychoeducational support groups, therapy available. We also have a sexual assault program, and you guys are probably aware, but we just opened our brand-new transitional housing facility last fall. And I just wanted to share a message of what a resounding success that that has been. We know that we set up that program that people could stay for up to two years, but as of this month, we have five families that are already successfully graduating from that program and moving into housing of their own. So they didn't need to stay for the entire two years, and they are moving on into safe and stable permanent housing and making spots for additional residents to come in. So that's something we're very proud of, the, why they're there. They're also doing financial literacy and a lot of different classes that are changing the outcome and the future of their, their families. We also have a childcare center onsite, and I'd like people to know that, because childcare is a scarce resource sometimes, and childcare is available for people that don't necessarily need YCC services. We're available to anyone in the community, but they do respite care for people in shelter, and a lot of our clients that come through our programs then use our childcare center as they go on to gain employment and move on into the community. So today, I wanted to give you an update on some changes and some growth that we've seen in Weaver County. You guys are probably aware, but in the 2023 legislature, the Senate passed SB 117, which is, was the lethality assessment protocol. What that did was mandated that all law enforcement agencies in the state of Utah are to use the LAP, is what it's called, when responding to domestic violence incident. It's a standardized tool used by officers on scene to assess whether a victim is at high risk of being seriously harmed or killed by their partner. Victims who screen as high danger are immediately connected to the local domestic violence service provider, that's YCC here in Weaver County, for safety, planning, shelter, and advocacy. So it really helps law enforcement identify and intervene in the most dangerous domestic violence cases, and it ensures rapid proactive connections between victims and support services. And one of the things, I joined YCC as their executive director earlier this year, but I have had the honor in my career to work as a victim advocate through different courses of my, over the past about 15 years. So I've been a domestic violence advocate, I've done protective orders, I've been a sexual assault advocate before moving on to become a director. And I've personally seen how the LAP works. I was at Safe Harbor at one point when the LAP first came to Utah in about 2011, and I've seen firsthand how it impacts people's lives. There's something that happens in that interaction between law enforcement and the victims on those, on scene that really connects with people. I have had numerous people that have been victims of domestic violence say, "My mom's been telling me for years I need help." I've known it myself, but then this, this police officer told me that he was really worried about me, and people that have experienced the types of events that I have have been killed, and it just made me realize that it was like a turning point for me in my life where I realized I needed help. I believe so strongly in the LAP, and I'm so glad that Weaver County does the LAP to fidelity. One of the things about the LAP, and we'll talk about this some more, but other places in Utah, they have seen a huge increase in the numbers of LAPS, and YCC has seen a 25% increase, but that's because Weaver County was already strong partners. We have had, we only brought on a couple new agencies. We have been doing the LAP here in Weaver County for many years, and it's been so successful. We worked through the bumps when it came to Utah, and it was brand-new. Many of our law enforcement partners in Weaver County joined on, were the first to join on when it was by choice, before it became mandated by law. I also want to share some changes that have happened. So that was in the 2023 legislative session that the LAP was passed, and then last year, we had seen, like I mentioned, YCC had seen a 25% increase, but all of the domestic violence service providers went together to the legislature to ask for support, to pay for these increased demand on services. Representative Benyon ran the request, and it was seen in the Social Services Appropriation Committee. It was a $1.4 million to support all the domestic violence shelters across the state to help support the increase by SB 117. They, we even, YCC participated in that. Our own lethality assessment protocol coordinator, Lexis Goodpasture, who was a past law enforcement officer with Weaver County and then left that career to become an advocate at YCC, she testified before the appropriations committee. We worked really closely with Representative Benyon. And despite statewide support and extensive legislative engagement, the appropriations request was not funded by the state. This next form, I gave you a copy of this, but this is what the LAP is. It, it goes through, I want to just tell you a little history of that. It's an Evidence Day Space Protocol off the work of Dr. Jacqueline Campbell, and she was working out of Maryland and saw that there was these key issues, or these key factors that were present in a lot of fatal and near fatal domestic violence incidents. And so they did a lot of data and coding, and Maryland, when they started doing the lethality assessment, they saw 2/3 reduction in fatal domestic violence cases there. And it became a standardized protocol nationwide, and then Utah joined on a few years ago with it becoming a law last year. But it's interesting, some of the questions, and you can look over that, it's, strangulation is a really big key indicator of fatal domestic violence, but there's also some things, like if the abuser has access to a firearm, if there are children in the home present that are not the abuser's children, there's a lot of, and so if they keep, screen in with one of the top sections for high danger, they're immediately categorized as high danger, or if they do four of the below questions. So it's, this is for intimate partner domestic violence, not for siblings or roommates or anything like that. This is based on intimate partner domestic violence. And like I mentioned, I have seen so many times that this protocol has helped connect victims to services. One of the things that we've seen is that the number of referrals that have come in have increased, but also the number of high danger referrals have, has increased. But 61% of the calls that we get in are people that we've never spoken to before. We also know that that's the way that this is working. Law enforcement is connecting to people, they're getting called out to homes by neighbors, by bystanders, by the victims themselves, and getting involved in domestic violence. And these are people that didn't call us on their own. They called us because law enforcement went out, talked to them, screened them, showed compassion and empathy for their situation, and then said, "We'd love to connect you with someone that can help you get out of this situation long-term." As you guys are well aware, Ogden City is our largest population here in Weaver County. And so likewise, most of our, a large percentage of our lethality assessment protocols come from Ogden City. We do have a really great MOU with Ogden City where they contribute $35,000 a year to YCC to help support the calls from the LAP, and we have an MOU with them, and that has continued. What I'd like to talk about today is the cities outside of Ogden, and just make sure that that light is shown and that people see that it's a lot of other cities. So this next chart breakdown is showing, you know, our biggest city outside of Ogden is Roy. We see a lot from West Haven. South Ogden, South Ogden is one of our new cities that came on after the bill passed. North Ogden has also been a supporter of YCC. Riverdale, of course, and you guys are probably aware, Riverdale saw two fatal domestic violence incidences in the last couple of months, which have been, really rocked their community, and we have reached out to them to offer support and condolences. But even our small cities like Morgan and Huntsville and Marriott Sladeville are seeing domestic violence cases that are coming through because of law enforcement. I also want to shine a light, this is outside of the LAP, but sexual assault data, we are seeing an increase in sexual assault data. In 2024, we had 58 CODAR exams. CODAR exams is, are when there is a recent sexual assault within the last 72 to 96 hours, they call law enforcement. Law enforcement initiates this protocol. As you guys are probably aware, New Safe is located at the Health Department, and as long as there is not any significant or serious injuries to the victim, they can have that exam taken place right at the Health Department, 24 hours a day, after hours, and our advocates from YCC respond. I have also been engaged in sexual assault advocacy across the state, and I have to tell you that Weaver County has one of the best protocols in the state, because in other places in Utah, when you're sexually assaulted, they take you to the emergency room, or sometimes you bump into someone that you might know, or you get pushed to back of the line because there's a significant car accident or a trauma, and so you can wait there for hours in a busy waiting room with kids running around, waiting for a sexual assault exam. But here in Weaver County, you're taken into a private entrance in the back of the Health Department, into a private area where there's a waiting room for you and your family, and a trained sexual assault nurse does that exam with you, with law enforcement, advocate from YCC, and a same nurse. Same nurses do respond to emergency rooms with advocates, but it's just very trauma-informed, it's very quiet. Weaver County does an excellent job, I think the best in the state when it comes to sexual assault. As you can see, that in 2025, as of, this is FY '25, we've done 61 exams, so we are on trend for higher-than-average sexual assault exam numbers. I also want it to be highlighted that we provide sexual assault services to people that live in this county, but also when an assault occurs in this county, and maybe the resident lives somewhere else, so could be here on vacation, or at a concert, or here seeing a friend, it doesn't matter if they live in this county or if they were sexually assaulted in this county, YCC responds to those incidences. In the past, we've kind of really emphasized crime data, but this is a number, this chart here I wanted to share, because when I looked at this data, it meant a lot to me. And what I want you to know is that these numbers that I'm really focusing on today is, these are not just phone calls, these are not just people that like talk to a hotline, these are ongoing, in-person, one-on-one services, and we really specialize in that. So even if we take our smallest city like Huntsville that had two victims that reached out for services through the LAP, or were referred through the LAP, they came to us and had 16 appointments. So these could be shelter nights, these could be protective order appointments, these could be court follow-ups, but these are, these could be attending domestic violence groups, or working with a case manager on employment or housing, but these clients are coming back numerous times. And it also shows that we have clients that are seeing us long-term, so they're, they're going through ongoing services. Not everyone, of course, some people do not want to engage in services this time, but many, many of our clients are continuing services and following up with a caseworker and talking to their advocate. And when I saw this, I was really impressed. It looks, some of the raw data says people come in about, for about 10 appointments, but there's definitely cities that are seeing far more follow-ups per capita than that. But it really goes to show that we are there, not just in that incident, the night of the domestic violence, but we are supporting these individuals long-term, trying to help them out of these really difficult and dangerous situations. So we are your LAP partners. We are partners with every law enforcement, the sheriffs, unincorporated Weaver County, all of the major cities. We are committed to being there, to show up and support our law enforcement partners no matter what. We provide services out, and many law enforcement partners do have advocates. Advocates within law enforcement are kind of a bridge between the victim and the detective, or the victim and the prosecutor, and they do valuable services. We have wonderful relationships with those advocates. The kind of advocacy we provide is unduplicated, and it is, even if you could put people in a hotel, our shelter is safe, it's secure, we provide food, shelter, clothing, case management, and then that ongoing support. We're law enforcement partners often have to kind of end that interaction once the case is closed or has been adjudicated. But we will work with victims for free and ongoing as long as they need us. We will continue to provide that LAP training, victim services, support for victims. We're available 24 hours, 365 days a week. On Christmas morning, there's an advocate from YCC that will respond out if there's an incident anywhere in this entire county. And of course, we're very embedded in the courts. We have a great relationship with the Second District Court. Our advocates there are there every Monday and Wednesday, sitting next to people in protective order court. And we, of course, we do shelter. We hope that this continued support will decrease the number of repeat responses by law enforcement, and therefore decreasing the financial burden of that on your law enforcement. We want to support victims so we can decrease the number of assaults and homicides, and we know that the time immediately after someone leaves their abuser is the most dangerous time for a victim. What we're doing today is coming to talk and ask for support from Weaver County. We see ourselves as not just a nonprofit within the county, but an extension of your law enforcement services. We want to address not only the immediate social issues, but contribute to economic stability in Weaver County by reducing healthcare costs, improving workforce productivity, and decreasing law enforcement expenditures related to domestic violence. Unfortunately, recent trends indicate a decline in federal, and as I mentioned earlier, state support for local domestic violence shelters. In fact, last week, I presented at WACOG on Monday, and then on Thursday, we got our VOCA grant award, and we had a decrease of $50,000 a year based off of what we had last year, and that is directly for our victim advocates, our bilingual advocate, our LAP coordinator, our domestic violence program. We lost $50,000 over what, and that's VOCA funds, which is federal funds. So we have now lost state funds, we have lost federal funds. So what I'm coming today is to ask support from the county. And we previously have kind of tried to quantify that, what would be the number, but what we're asking for is that, as county commissioners, that you look at your budget and see if there's any room to provide financial support for the domestic violence shelter, whatever. This year, our goal is to just, whatever level of support that can be, we would greatly appreciate it. We will want to keep, we will keep our doors open. We've been here for 80 years, and we will be here as long as our community needs us. But in order to continue that support, we do need some financial support from our local community. And so I want to follow up with you by email, make myself available. I've given you my card to talk individually about this. But Weaver County has supported us financially in the past, but it's been a little bit, and we'd love to, to strengthen that partnership, if possible, going forward. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I do. So I know that you visited WACOG, and I saw your city breakdown. Have you visited with the individual cities, and what type of support are you receiving?
Yeah.
Say, you said Ogden, for example. I'm wondering if there's some type of metric between the number of services or number of cases and, you know, those particular cities that maybe they should contribute to your revenue source.
Absolutely. So we're just kind of starting this process, and, you know, all of our financials are transparent and public, and I can share with you that last year, we received $35,000 from Ogden City. North Ogden contributed $14,000. Marriott Sladeville, I believe, $2,000. And I believe that was, oh, and Morgan County donated $10,000. So we didn't have support from some of our other big ones, Roy, Riverdale, South Ogden. We have had a metric in the past, and, that we shared last year when we came around, our previous executive director, and this year, we're, instead of just assigning that to you guys, I'd be happy to show you a breakdown, and I do have that data, and I can email it to you, based on per capita. We have something for, like, unincorporated Weaver County in each city. We are grateful for any amount of support that that could possibly be. So our plan is to visit every city in Weaver County and ask for the same support that we're asking you for today.
Well, you guys do a great service, and I say, you know, and I know in the past we have allocated and appropriated some money for YCC. It may be important for you to come to a budget session this year with, and I would suggest you come down with a breakdown as far as for unincorporated Weaver County, you know, what the caseload may show, and just so that we have some good data to work from.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that.
That's my suggestion.
Yeah. Happy to do that.
Anything else, Steph?
No, but you, I found it for the first time in these presentations for nearly a decade, you made a statement that finally has rang home, that you're an accessory, or, or you help bring the cost of, of law enforcement down, so maybe when you make that presentation during the budget as Commissioner Faur, I'll just piggyback on that, but you maybe spent some time with the Weaver County Sheriff and their budget folks and put together an idea of how that's, this savings comes together, and so I could see this more as an offshoot of the sheriff's budget, since I know we've taken a very close look at that, so.
Good talking.
That's wonderful feedback. I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, we will move on in our agenda to the consent items. Number one is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $598,330.13. Number two, requests for approval of warrants numbers 105221 through 105287, and 491259 through 491378, in the amount of $2,792,349.73. For a summary of warrants and purchase orders, Mr. Jason Horn.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
For the purchase order summary, it looks like there were a total of 11 purchase orders. That amount was 598,000. Of that, 28% or 170,000 was for the roads department, and that was a large chip and tack order, chip and tack oil order, sorry, as a result of a bid we put out earlier this year. Another 28% or 166,000 was for capital improvements at the ice sheet in the form of LED sound system and some new tables and chairs. 25% or 151,000 is for the fleet department, and this is truck bed and connections for a new dump truck. And then 15% or 88,000 is for engineering, and that is out at the Eden Fire Station. This is a storm drain connection. The warrant summary, we've got a total of 187 warrants. That amount is 2.7 million. 69% or 1.9 million is for road construction on 20th Street in Ogden, and that was paid for with transportation tax dollars. 5% or 152,000 is at the library, and that's in the form of security camera upgrade, upgrades for the main library, books and materials, utilities, and building maintenance. The top five vendor payouts were, number one, Ogden City Corporation for 1.9 million; two is Anderson Asphalt LLC for 133,000; three is Pro Edge Technology LLC for 80,000; number four is Resolution AV LLC for 55,000; and number five is for Premier Vehicle Installation at 47,000. Are there any questions that I might be able to help you with?
Any questions?
None for me.
Thank you for that.
All right. Thank you. Number four, a request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on June 3rd, 2025. Number five, request for approval of a release of deferral agreement on the 2700 North at 1543 and 1525 West, because curb, sidewalk, and pavement improvements have been met. Number six, request for approval of renewal of a contract by and between Weaver County and Multi-County Appraisal Trust, MCAT, for assistance with the development of a statewide personal property tax system. Number seven, request for approval of a local transportation funding agreement by and between Weaver County and South Ogden City to establish terms related to the 40th Street Project Phase Two. Number eight, request for approval of a local transportation funding agreement by and between Weaver County and North Ogden City to establish terms related to the North Ogden City Mountain Road Corridor Preservation Project. Number nine, request for approval of a transportation and land use connection consultant agreement by and between Weaver County and Wasatch Front Regional to hire avenue consultants to assist with the Three Gate Trail project. Any questions or comments? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items. Today is listed under item G, like Gulf 1 through, including 9, just with a little comment, really glad to see that we've got the Three Gate Trail project moving forward with the WFRC. That's gonna be a big, huge year for Weaver County.
I have a motion.
And I'll second that and agree 100% with the comments. Commissioner Harvey, that Three Gate Trail is a project we've been working on for a couple of years, and it's great to see it move forward. Stephanie Russell did a good job of that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Aye, motion carries. Item H, action items. Number one, request for approval of the first reading of fee ordinance amendments relating to the Weaver County transfer station. Mr. Sean Wilkinson.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We are before you with another update to the fee ordinance for the transfer station. This time, this is to increase the tipping fee for general waste and construction and demolition waste from $50 to $52.24 per ton. So an increase this year, we did not have an increase last year, so this would be the increase for the last two years. There's a summary provided there that explains what that increase is for, but it is for an increase in transportation costs and disposal costs from our public services as well as an increase for personnel and operations costs for Weaver County itself. So that's where that extra $2.24, that's what it covers. In addition to that, we are increasing the cost of mattress disposal from $5 to $15 per mattress after the first two mattresses. So the first two are free as part of your load, but anything more than that, it will be $15 per mattress. And then we are increasing the cost of the delivery fee for our compost and wood products. So we do offer a delivery service and there are two different categories. One is for basically anything in Weaver County, west of the mountains. And then there's a higher fee for the Ogden Valley and anything out of county that we choose to serve. So those are the changes that we're proposing for the fee ordinance at the transfer station.
Any questions?
No, I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
So I would make a motion to approve the first reading of the fee ordinance amendments related to the Weaver County transfer station as presented by Mr. Wilkinson this morning with a comment.
Okay.
So obviously these fees, it's always necessary just to keep up with inflation and what we see cost-wise that people should pay for these services. But in the meeting this morning I had with my directors, I learned, and Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, that on Saturday, and we've done some major work out there with our C and D disposals we just talked about, we had 1,100.
Yes.
1,100 loads, cars, trucks go through that and didn't have any, had no more than, was it three cars backed up at one time?
Correct.
So 1,100 in one day. Just shows the efficiency of the operation that Sean and Ron and John have been able to accomplish out of the transfer station. So anyway, happy to make that motion.
Second. Agreed.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Number two, request for discussion and/or action on ordinance 2025-11, amending the development agreement for the previously approved Kobe branch development located at approximately 2720 North and 5100 East. The amendments are intended to help clarify the roles and responsibilities of both the developer and the governing body. Charlie Ewart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, we had a public hearing about both the Kobe branch and the Eagle Crest projects. In that meeting, the applicant requested that we hold any kind of decision on this until we have an ordinance prepared, which we do now. So in front of you, you've got the the ordinance as well as the development agreement attached to that. Happy to go into more detail if you have any more questions, but if you don't, I'm happy to sit down too.
Are you speaking for both of them and do you want, we'll take the vote separately, but?
I'm happy to do a separate one for for each, but they're both pretty much the same thing, just site specific.
Just asking if you had anything to add on Eagle Crest, so it sounds like not.
Nothing more.
Any questions? Mr. Ewart, if not, then I'm ready for a motion on that ordinance.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-11 as presented during the first reading and then also subsequently today by Mr. Ewart.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Brown?
Roll call vote for ordinance 2025-11. Commissioner Faur?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bolus?
Aye, motion carries. And item three, action on ordinance 2025-12, amending the development agreement for the previously approved Eagle Crest development located at approximately 4601 East Fairways Drive. The amendments are intended to help clarify the roles and responsibilities of both the developer and the governing body.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-12 as it relates to Eagle Crest development, again, 4601 East Fairways Drive with a comment.
Okay.
You know, we have the opportunity as Commissioners to hear from a wide variety of different developers who come through in Weaver County. I just, I just felt impressed to just say that how fortunate we are that we have a developer in Mr. John Lewis who's not self-serving, who he's a man of character, kindness, he knows how to treat people well, he knows how to treat our staff well. He's a giver, he gives back. He is running a business, but he has the best intentions in my perspective of the, of that area of the county. And I just count it a privilege to to know him and be able to associate with him. I appreciate his, who he is as a man and who he is as a, as a human being and just to find it refreshing to meet someone of that caliber and quality. I just wanted to say that. Thank you. But that's my motion.
Thank you.
And I'll second that and agree with the comments. Also make another comment that in review of these amendments, these ordinances, I think that this clarifies and makes the future very clear in terms of the rights of whoever develops that property, whether it's Mr. Lewis or somebody else. But paints a clear picture that these ordinances, these development agreements are put in, into force to make sure that the best interest of the public is served and the general plan of the county is followed as, as directed by our planning staff. So the slight modifications made to the development agreements, I think clarify and hopefully we'll make sure that the people for the new city up there have a clear picture of what the intent of these development agreements are and that they should follow those development agreements to the T. So that's my second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Roll call vote for ordinance 2025-12. Commissioner Faur?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Chair Bolus?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you so much. Item I, Commissioners.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're adjourned.
Do not.